I'd like to call the Norfolk Annual Town Meeting to order. My name is Jay Tallerman. I am your moderator. I'm going to declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published, and that it's reading the way. Thank you again for the second year in a row for your patience and understanding with the circumstance that brings us to an outdoor town meeting on a weekend. Thank you for being here, most of all for doing the important business for the town of Norfolk. If we could stand, there's a flag over there to do the pleasantries. I pleasantly need to... Thank you. Couple of just procedural, that you're wearing masks, group check-in. Now we're outdoors, more socially distanced. If you want to take your mask off while you're seated, that is totally fine. When you go up to the mic, you may keep your mask off but stay socially distanced. The mics will be sprayed in between sessions, in between discussions. So we give a pause there. Speak clearly and directly into the mic. The acoustics are okay, but they're not perfect, so we want to make sure that you are heard. As is our custom and tradition, we take this time at town meeting to honor those former town officials who have passed since the last town meeting. We've given their service to the town. A list of those: Maureen Lilja, Norfolk Public Schools; Marsha Christie, Norfolk Public Schools; Janet Privet, who had numerous positions in town hall; Clara White from Norfolk NKP Schools; Mary Conlin, Norfolk Public Schools; Constance LeChance, tax collector; and James Ward, who was on the advisory board. In the midst of this pandemic, where we struggle on a daily basis to cope with enormous suffering, it's important that we honor those who have passed and understand the sacrifices that they've made. If we could have a moment of silence for everyone who's passed. Okay, let me introduce some of the players for today. On my far left, Todd Lindmark is our finance director. He, along with our town administrator, will be able to help answer questions on financial matters. Carol Green, our town clerk, is seated next to him. To my right, C.C. Van Tyne, chair of the Select Board; town administrator, Blythe Robinson; and on the far table, sitting all by his lonesome, is Peter Mello, our town council, who can help answer legal questions. The advisory board is seated on the track in front of me. The chair is by Susan Klein. Our advisory board will be making most motions today, not all, but most. Our teller, if we need one today, is Andy Bakanowski, who's seated over there. He'll be counting votes if we have to count votes. Some of the rules for town meeting. We're governed by parliamentary procedure under town meeting time. And there's some general guidance within the warrant and the materials as well. I will explain procedures and, as needed, and will recognize requests for points of order if, in fact, you don't understand what the motion is or the vote is that is on the floor. Again, motions will be made, for the most part, by the advisory board, with the exception of petitioner articles, of which there are one or two, which I allow to be made by the petitioners. If there is a motion for what is called indefinite postponement, that motion is to essentially defeat the article. So if you hear that, today, that's what that motion is for. Those who make motions will have the first opportunity to explain the rationale behind the article if they so choose. All motions to amend, if you have a motion to amend, must be in writing. If there are forms with... Anthony Dury over here, holding his hand up, he has forms. If you don't have it in writing already. If there's a ministerial or clerical or typographical motion to amend, then may accept that without writing as a friendly amendment and without a vote. If people have questions on how to amend a vote and because they have something, I will help you. I want to demystify the process and make it easy. If you have something you want to change, let's get it right. I'm going to try, if there's debate on a particular article, I'm going to try and balance debate pros and cons as best I can. Everyone has a chance to speak on all matters, but at a certain point, if we're getting repetitive, I may move that along. Along those lines, I do recognize a call of the question or to cut off debate, which would allow us to go forward and end debate there. That's a two-thirds vote. Max of five minutes on your first trip to the mic, if you need it. Three minutes on a second time. If you need to get up a third time, I may recognize you. If you need to go over, then allot me. If you're still saying something important, I may allow that as well. But I may also move you along if you're going over. All comments and questions go through the moderator. I don't want speakers talking to each other. If you have something, ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you if it is in order. I do want to have spirited debate on anything that you want to debate, but I want to keep it civil, nothing personal. I don't want to hear what you think someone else thinks. I want to hear what you think. So I don't want to hear most so-and-so said. I want to hear your opinions. That's what counts. We have a bunch of local officials here today. I will recognize them as need me, if they're not citizens of Norfolk, to answer questions or give presentations. Because we're outside, I may not ask for voice votes. It's kind of hard to hear through some of the breeze. I will probably ask for a show of hands, yea and nay, on each vote. If I can't tell by the show of hands, I may ask you to stand. If I still can't tell, then we may count the vote, and Mr. Bakanowski will help me with that. There's a bunch of handouts that were at the front desk. If you didn't get them, you may wish to go grab one because they have some of the budgetary information and some of the information explained. Obviously, we don't have a screen behind me like we would if we were indoors to go through some of those things. So there's a bunch of business to get through. I think we can handle it in a couple of hours and still get a lot of good debate in. No motion is required on Article 1. The next issue, the next item up for consideration is what we call a consent calendar, which is to handle administrator or ministerial matters that don't normally get much debate in one single motion without debate. The way we're going to do this is after there's a motion by Ms. Klein to approve the consent calendar, and I think there's a page on this in the handout, I will read the title and the number for each of the articles. If you want to discuss that article, you think there's something to debate, yell "hold," we'll pull it out of the consent calendar, and we'll deal with it in its normal course in the way it came up. So Ms. Klein.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve all articles.
There are second. Motion made in second. And now I'll read the number and the title of the article. And again, if you want to discuss it, yell "hold," and we will pull it out of the consent agenda. Article number four is the annual compensation schedule. Article six is the water enterprise fund budget. Article seven is the wastewater enterprise fund budget. Article 11 is the annual spending limits for our revolving funds. Article 13 is the required set-asides for the CPA budget, not the individual expenditures themselves, just the required set-asides. Article 14 is, again, administrative expenses tied to the CPA. Again, not the individual expenditures. Article 25 is the annual acceptance of state Chapter 90 road funds. Article 26 is the authority for the town to accept grants. Article 27 is the authority to dispose of surplus property. Okay, so seeing no holds, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Moving on, Article number two, prior year bills. Mr. Huff.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve... Oops, sorry. Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 2.
Second. Mr. Huff?
There are no unpaid bills.
Pretty straightforward. Seeing no one lining up to the mics to discuss the no unpaid bills. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, raise their hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Article three, fiscal year 2021 transfers. Mr. Huff.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the transfers as printed in the handout.
And there is a handout in the materials that were available when you came in. If people are looking for that, should be organized chronologically by article. Mr. Huff?
Well, we... We approved them. Oh, sorry.
So this is the annual, just taking care of some items that weren't covered by the budget, where we have to move some money around?
These are all... These are all normal and sort of customary. There were... I don't know if...
We don't have to. If people have questions based on the handout, I'll be happy to have someone answer them. Mr. Rosenberg?
It would be under Article three, I believe? This handout material.
It's kind of in the PowerPoint-looking handout that was available when you came in. Any further questions on Article three transfers, which totaled $337,253.90? Seeing no questions or comments on this article, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Article four was approved on the consent calendar. Article five is the operating budget. Before we take a motion, I want to just explain what we do under the operating budget. Again, there's a handout that goes through a detailed line on a detailed line item basis. So what we're going to do is we're going to take a motion by Ms. Klein, and then we are going to have some presentations on the budget by the town administrator and by Norfolk NKP Schools if they choose to give a presentation. And then what I will do is I'm going to read major, the major line items, general government, public safety, education, et cetera. But there are details in each of those major areas of government. Those are available to everyone. If you want to hold any part of those line items that I read, shout "hold" when I read that, and we will then discuss those and have discussion or questions on that. And we're happy, we have plenty of people here to answer all of those questions. So with that, Ms. Klein, you have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town fix the salary and compensation of the elected position of town clerk at $81,531.44 as required for by the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2021, and further raise and appropriate the sum of $44,804,491 to defray the departmental and incidental expenses of the town, not otherwise provided for, for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2020.
Second? Thank you.
The advisory committee voted to approve the operating budget for fiscal year 2022 with one absence and one day vote. The entire operating budget is $44,804,491, which is an overall increase of 3.53% over fiscal year 2021. The key highlights from this year's budget are partially restoring the cuts made to last year's town budget due to the pandemic, new equipment for our police officers, and a reduction in DPW transfer station expenses of almost 113%. Real estate and building receipts are strong and expected to continue to grow. State aid increases are proposed in the governor's budget for both UGGA and Chapter 70. Motor vehicle excise tax is on track to increase by $50,000. A reduction in the meals taxes recommended as the pandemic continues to impact restaurants. There is no proposed use of free cash this year.
Thank you. Ms. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, as the moderator said, the detail for the budget is included in the handout with the town seal that says Town of Norfolk preliminary budget FY 2022. And I'm going to be reading from the handout that says Town of Norfolk came of town meeting FY 22 useful budget. Thank you. First of all, I hope in this last very difficult year that all of you and your families are doing well and know it's been tough for everyone and that you're doing well. This year has been quite different from last year. When we stood before you in late June, there was still so much uncertainty about the world, COVID, when there would be vaccines, when things would come back to whatever normal is going to be. And that really drove our budget that we put together for that year. How long will this last? Will there be a vaccine? Other thoughts, how are we going to make sure we keep our public safety, our fire, our paramedics, our police officers safe during this time? When can kids go back to school safely? What would that look like? Would we have to lay off staff because of the budget and revenue collections throughout the year? But we put together a budget, and we cut back sharply. Not in order to do so, to make sure that we were going to be able to manage throughout this time. We also didn't know what the pandemic meant in terms of cost to the town. How much would we eat? Would we eat? Could we even get it? What would it cost to actually open a school safely? Is that going to happen? We stood before you in late June, the same budget had it. It didn't pass until late October. And what were the projections that we made about those revenues going to be on track? Or were they going to be less? We didn't know that by then. And then finally, probably most importantly, what does this mean to our taxpayers and our businesses? Were people going to have job losses that affected their ability to provide the revenue that the town services depend on? What did it mean for our businesses? Were they going to close? When could they reopen? Restaurants, they were very seriously affected and are only starting to recover. And how would it affect the services we provided? Some services, the usage went up, more water being used, more trash collection because people were at home. So here we are, almost 11 months later, and I'm here to tell you that the outlook is better than we had thought last year. Our local receipts have a favorable outlook. The pandemic costs have been largely covered by federal stimulus. We received over $1 million in what they call CARES funds, and that has covered the lion's share of our costs this past year. We also can charge things to the federal government FEMA department. And soon coming is funds under the ARPA stimulus package. It's recently passed, though we don't have the details on how that will be spent. State aid has increased from what was projected, the general government aid account that we used for our budget. The state's revenue projections were up 3.5%, and that is reflected in what we're receiving, and our tax collections are on track. So how are we doing this year? Our tax receipts are ahead of last year by the end of March, our third quarter by almost 4%. Building permits are $85,000 over budget as of the end of March. I know we sat in some meetings and wondered, will anybody be able... If people are losing their jobs, will they be building anything when they're all stuck at home? Guess what? They aren't. They are. We have some unbudgeted revenues that we didn't depend on but have come in. Prison mitigation funds that the town receives were actually came in early this calendar year. And we held a foreclosure auction for properties that the town doesn't need and taken in that manner, and that brought in over $300,000. And our expenses through the third quarter are slightly down, just under 73%. And as I mentioned earlier, a lot of the costs to respond to the pandemic have been covered through different sources. So what were our priorities in this budget year? One of the most important priorities was be able to restore education budgets and meet the requirements that all of our schools have to be ready for a full year of in-person learning. And we're excited that that's going to happen. As always, to fill the town's contractual obligations, whether it's union contracts, things that we purchase throughout the year, paying employees, cover a lot of those. Realigning the expenses within DPW. We wanted to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our recreation department. We're excited that, as you've seen from their programs, they're getting back up and running. And we want to make sure that we're ready to have all of those deals and things that they use. Ready as they expected. Very proud that we are not relying on any free cash for the first time in 10 years to balance the budget. We used about $125,000 last year and none this year. And also that we're, while meeting all these requirements, we're keeping our budget to what we think is as low an increase as we can. The increase for next year is 3.5%, and that's almost a whole percent below what the average over the last 20 years has been, which is 4.4%. So as the moderator mentioned, we have shown the recommended budget at $44,804,491, and the major categories are listed on the fifth page of your handout. The higher ones are, again, general government, public safety, education, and public works. The other areas are lower than that. And there are two reductions, which are in debt, it's within the levy, and exempt debt. Both of those are going down by 5.84% respectively. Just a nod on revenues. I've got two slides in the presentation. First is the overall revenue picture. The tax base is up, and that's due to 2.5% levy increase as we do every year. And new growth is targeted at $6,000. Local receipts is up for a couple of reasons. Excise tax revenue, building permits, a couple of other line items. And state aid is up over $250,000. The following slide goes into that a little more detail. You can see overall state aid increases up 6.27%. And the biggest jump is in unrestricted government aid. As we told you, we cut back significantly last year. Very unsure what the state is going to do. And in fact, it came in higher, and the increase next year is for another 3.5%. So just to mention a couple more revenue highlights. As I mentioned, the levy increase is 2.5% plus new growth. Building permit revenue, we're increasing it modestly by $25,000. We do have reduced meals tax a little bit, just as I mentioned earlier. Looking forward to our residents getting fully back in business, but we want to be cautious about that. And while we're not using any free cash, so not going to fully depend on prison litigation funds since that's never a definite that we're going to receive that money. So what are the expenditure highlights? As I mentioned, we're proud that all school budgets are funded as requested. On the town stop, the police and fire budgets are both up by 6%. Those are due to contractual obligations in the third year of those contracts. Particularly in fire. As you probably recall, we did get a grant for the two newest firefighter paramedics that we have from the federal government. And those funds, over time, become fully the responsibility of the town. Transition of how much is covered by that grant starts to tail off, and that impacts the budget. Another area you might have noticed has gone up significantly is in the area of technology. That is because we are sharing for a full year this next year a position with the town of Millis for IT technical support. It's been a tough year to keep up with all of the requirements of doing everything electronically, but our staff has done an awesome job. Our costs for email are going up, and things like Zoom accounts that we never had before, we're going to need to keep in place. As I mentioned, DPW relying, realigning costs for recreation. And we're pleased that we can reduce the transfer station expenses for the next year. We've established a stormwater division. It's been, I think, the town's been paying for every year, but we felt it was important to get it in the budget. Our fixed costs include, very pleased to say, that our health insurance costs are going down by 0.6%. However, because of the Norfolk school budget adding back some positions, we'll have three health accounts to plan for. But overall, that increase is quite modest, and pension assessments are up a little bit. And as I mentioned, debt is down a little bit for next year. And then lastly, thinking about the year ahead. We're going to be studying closely the information that comes out for the latest federal stimulus fund. Norfolk is targeted on its own to receive just under $1.2 million directly from the state. There's a large amount of money going to Norfolk County. There's debate going on about whether or not they should keep all those funds since they don't do a lot of the services that we provide as the local government. And if those monies were to go then directly to the town instead of the county, Norfolk's share would be $3.5 million approximately. We'll continue to monitor the local receipts, make sure they're on track, and we don't need to make any adjustments in the fall. But I think we'll be in a better place to continue to work on capital improvements, roads, fire apparatus. We're going to need a new salt shed coming soon. Technology and vehicle replacements are always on the list. And then I'm hopeful that we'll be in a good position to consider putting some of our free cash in the fall into stabilization and continue to strengthen the financial picture of the town. Mr. Moderator, that's my presentation. Thank you. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Norfolk Public Schools. Either one, Klein. You pick it. Hold on, I'm not sure that's on.
Thank you very much for giving us a chance to share some information today about the elementary budget request for 2022. First of all, as Blythe said, we want to recognize that this has been a very challenging and difficult year for all of our students, for our parents, families, and community members. We recognize how hard it is for parents at home juggling work demands, childcare, family life, and supporting our children through both time and learning. So we are thrilled to have all of our students back full-time at school. We do have a handful of students that continue to learn remotely through the pandemic year, and we look forward to welcoming them all back in the fall. I do want to recognize and really appreciate the support, collaboration, and the feedback that our families have provided throughout the year to help us make our purpose stronger and make it responsible to our needs. And I also want to recognize the incredible dedication, hard work, and efforts of our folk elementary school teachers, our administrators, our paraprofessional staff, our technology team, our facilities team, youth service team, and all who have worked and gone above and beyond to try to provide the best education possible throughout the year. If you want further information on our budget, our full budget and the budget presentations available on the local town website as well as the Norfolk Public Schools website. And you can see the live presentation of our public hearing on Norfolk Public Schools. The budget that we're bringing forward today is a level service budget that will allow us to continually provide the same quality of training and instruction that we provided prior to the pandemic. We are asking today for a slightly higher increase than we have in the past. Our budget overall increase is 5.09%. But again, to put that in context, I think it's important to know last year, as a result of the uncertainty in the local and state revenues and the budget situation, the Norfolk Public Schools budget was reduced by 2.5% prior to the pandemic. When revenue did come in, it was stronger than it was. When revenue did come in, it was stronger than predicted. The town voted to restore about $80,000 to the Norfolk budget in the fall town meeting, and that left us with a deficit of about 1.8% on $232,000. As you probably remember, last year at town meeting, we did not advocate for the town to access stabilization funds or to find other ways to fully fund the budget at that time. We recognize the financial hardship of the town, and we worked collaboratively to bring forward a balanced budget. We also recognize that because of the number of restrictions that schools had in place this year, we would be able to absorb some of those financial losses for the short term. And for example, we did not build the position for the Freeman Kennedy School Library this year, and that was because our students weren't allowed to visit the library and they weren't able to certainly check out books. We also didn't build a technology integration position that supports our science and engineering and design program at the level of our degrees, because our kids also could not share technology equipment, computer equipment, or visit the neighbor space. We didn't build lunch monitor positions, as our students weren't having lunch in the cafeteria. We didn't build either assistant principal positions or a part-time school psychologist. So again, because we only had 50% of our students in school for most of the school year, we were able to absorb those losses this year, but we absolutely have to bring those positions back in order to return to the high level of original rigor that we have come to expect in Norfolk and that we will basically provide. The only new positions in next year's budget that we are requesting beyond the restorations of the positions that were lost, we're looking to add one full-time developmental master professional staff member, who will be able to support students in closing academic learning gaps that may have resulted due to the hybrid learning situation and in response to the pandemic next year. We are also looking to add a .5 library assistant. Our library program at both buildings says we're likely to maintain the efforts on volunteer support. And in the current economic climate, it has been harder and harder every year for us to recruit volunteers, and it's not sustainable. So we're looking for a .5 paraprofessional library assistant to support the operations of those programs. Other than that, we have a few positions that we're increasing slightly. We have to add a few hours to both our art and music teacher positions at the H.I.A. Lee School, and that is because we have been increasing it to four classes there this year or going into next year, because we need to be able to provide instruction in arts. We're also increasing slightly tech integration position. This year, we were able to hire through grant funding additional technology support to maintain our user environment and network. That position, the grant funding ends in June, and we've been critically short in technology help for a number of years, so we're looking to slightly increase that position to address our network and user environment needs. Other than that, we continue to pursue active grant funding. We have already brought in over $130,000 in grant funding to supplement programs next year for wellness and in other areas, as well as to pursue ways for managing cost savings, combined efforts between cost savings and grant funding. We have about $590,000 we're going to offset in the budget for this year. So that's the overall picture, and we ask for your support so that we can continue providing the instruction that we provide at the elementary construction process. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's true, you can have to a tall person, you have to lower the mic. And for those of you in the back, I'm sorry, this is tall as I get. Charlie, just be a voice that you can hear. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to your high school. We are so pleased that we are able to have you here today. We're sorry it's because of the COVID situation, and we want to thank our facilities director, Josanna, and his team of people who put this all together. While they did a superb job of prepping all of this, unfortunately, they were not able to adjust the temperature. The room temperature is what it is, and I apologize for that. So I will try to be brief so that you can stay warm. I also need to thank our sound team led by Joseph Ferreira, who's, again, doing the work so that you can all hear us today. The King Philip Regional School District is what I consider a gem of your communities. The education that our students receive, bar none, is one of the best educations across the country and in the world. Your students are receiving an excellent education, and they're prepared to go off into the world afterwards. We're very proud of that. We've worked very hard to try to provide a fiscally responsible budget for you. We look for a responsible, respectful budget that, again, continues to move our students forward. This year, we're presenting a budget with an overall increase of 3.46%. We call this budget a level service plus, because basically 3.25% of that is for level service, and 0.23% is for some slight increases that we feel are essential to continue to move your students forward. We are adding two positions this year with this budget. One is a technology position for the high school to be able to offer computer science and engineering courses. I think we'll all agree that in this day and age, we've realized just how important computer science and engineering is to our world, and we want to make sure that our students are well-prepared, so they want to be pursuing that career. This is also a re-institution of a position that was lost in 2008, when we had a very bad budget year prior to my arrival here. The second position that we are putting into place is an adjustment council position at the middle school. Again, I think we would all agree that with this past year that we've gone through, social emotional issues are paramount for us to be concerned with, and this position allows us to continue to have the staff that we need to make sure that all of our students' social emotional needs are addressed within the school. So again, those are the only two additional positions. Beyond that, what we've provided for you is a level service budget. We've worked very hard to get to you that kind of a budget. In fact, that level service budget means that we've also looked at a number of areas within our budget line items and tried to reduce wherever we can and re-manage those funds. A couple of areas that we're particularly proud of is that in the last four years and continuing through next year, we will have seen a reduction of 48% in our cost for outer district special education placements. We're very pleased that we've been able to build those programs internally and take some of that money and move that into quality programs that keep our students right here in their local schools with their peers and their families. Very proud of that. We've reduced legal costs by 76% over the last two years, and we've continued to go out and look for additional grants. Over the last year, we brought in $1.45 million in new grant funds. Some of those have been collaboratively written and worked on with our elementary partners, and we're very proud of that kind of cooperative partnership as well. Again, we also want to thank our staff, thank all of you for your support. Your support over the last year during this very difficult time has meant a great deal to us. And as we approach the end of Teacher Appreciation Week, I want to just take a moment to say something about that as well. I always struggle with these appreciation weeks or a day like Mother's Day where we're thanking some important person for once in the year. We have had an incredible team of professionals working this year, working every year, but it became exceptionally clear to us this year that our staff has done an incredible job during the most difficult times. Our teachers, our teacher assistants, secretaries, administrators, custodians, administrators, and all of you who've supported us, we can't thank you enough for that. We're very proud of what has happened this year and how we've weathered the storm, and we look to provide the highest quality education for your students in the future. And I thank you for coming out today and for helping to support our budget.
Thank you. Okay, so again, here's how we're going to go through the budget. There is, as Ms. Robinson said, a handout that's entitled "Town of Norfolk Preliminary Budget Fiscal Year 2022." The first page after the cover are the line items that I'm going to read and ask for hold. The pages beyond that have the detail for all the line items underneath those major categories. If you have a question about any of those subcategories and any particular area, hold the major budgetary thing. So if it's general government, there's a whole bunch of things from selectmen down through facilities management on the following pages. If you have questions on that, when I say general government, you say hold. If you don't, then we're going to move on. We're going to go through all of them, and then we'll come back to the hold. So pretty straightforward. If you have a question on public safety, whether it relates to police or fire, then do a hold, and so on and so on. So that is the process we're going to do. I'm not going to read each of those individual line items and ask for hold. So that's up to you to bring that discussion forward. So without further ado, general government, $3,471,080. We have a hold. Here's a hold? DPW, $2,308,214. Hold? Did I hear one? Might help if you raise your hand if you want a hold. It's hard for me to hear, folks. Human services, $248,638. Culture and Recreation, $812,63. Benefits and Insurance, $5,730,949. Debt Service, $575,360. Exempt Debt, $2,683,482. Okay, so I believe our first hold was with general government, so come on up to the I think maybe that mic over there, yeah, I want to try. Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure that that is that. You don't have to. If you want to keep your mask on, you can, but it's up to you.
I just had a good question under, oh, I just heard your one. Just a quick question under information. I was just curious why the fire, I'm sorry, why the police station. I have something to say.
So hold on, we have someone coming who's going to answer that question, I believe. Is that Mr. Hapner? Blake, you can answer.
Mr. Hapner is much better at answering this one than I am.
Okay, Mr. Hapner, come on up. So again, the question is the increase of 73% for police station expenses under general government.
After operating the station for...
Just talk into the mic so everyone can hear you.
After operating the station, we've come to realize there's some expenses that we inadequately prepared for from the beginning. A major change in the budget is the electricity line, also maintaining some of the equipment. We have a lot of critical electrical equipment that has bits of maintenance that we kind of, what is great, we had a holiday front, and now we're all maintaining all the generators, critical electric, and much of the electricity.
Thank you. Was there any further discussion under that general government? I didn't see another hold. The next hold, I believe, was under education.
Mr. Moderator, the answer to that is new students at the media school for next year? I think there's eight new ones. They've chosen that school system.
So to expand on that, the Norfolk Agricultural School provides us with a preliminary budget upfront, based on a number of students that they anticipate to go over there. This year, on the transfers, we also noticed that we had to come up with another $15,000 to cover some students that went on after they had already made their budgets to us. So it was during the school year. So that increase was from the budget of last year. The amount was the increase of the additional kids going this year.
Anything else on education? I did not see another hold. Okay. DPW, I believe there was a question.
Is it working?
It's working.
Andy Bakanski, Knott'suck Avenue. Actually, I had two line items. The first one was a simple one, the $50,000 for stormwater work. What does that include?
Couple things. The town is required to file MS4 permit from the federal government for stormwater management. The town has a five-year plan to do all the lead-up work to, that's required by the state in terms of engineering to figure out where all the stormwater basins are and look at the piping and the outflows. We've been passing this at town meeting in the fall for the last three years, $50,000 as a line item. We felt that because this is going to continue to have an ongoing cost, that we should put it into the budget formally. So this is, I think, going to be the fourth year of the five years of doing that preliminary work. It will increase after that, but the difference here is, I think, $11,000 more than it was actually banking last fall's budget.
I'm just saying, I've done these permits, I've done the mapping and stuff like that. So the reason I'm asking is that there have been improvements, so some of the paid in and in the neighborhood, structures we built, and I think it's been a change. And I even looked at the final, I was like, I don't know, 10 million, I think those district structures are supposed to be on point. So, so is that question, this is actually, I don't know, identify additional BJ, the landfill. Boyer's predecessor and his predecessor might ask the question, why don't we look at the money system for the treatment system and the deal with reducing money? We're getting to a point that financially it's becoming a reality that we shouldn't be looking at, and I guess this is an engineer that asked about why this additional BJ is being approved. And the past five years, I spent a lot of time on landfills looking at stormfields, and this is an indication that something's going on with the landfill that we need to identify what's going on in this town.
So Andy, I think that that's a great question for the folks that are working on it, is there something about one of the line items in here?
Well, yeah, the thing is that obviously the document is going up, and I just don't want to see that falling even after, I don't know what they said, but what they threw on the documents, even listening to some of the hearings, that there's been, it's like, what is the BJ, nothing else?
It's only started to become a problem, I think, about November of this year, when the amounts start to go up. We've had our engineers, Dr. Verma, the energy designers, we've just very recently, the last year or so, hopefully identified because of the light, it's causing more water to go in there than should be, depending if the DPW director is correct about that, this will be a very expensive exit, probably won't be all the months next year.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is the history of what I've seen, and we're starting to see some changes, because the panels have changed over the past few years.
We're very concerned about that.
Thank you. Okay, so if there are no other holds, this is a simple majority vote on the whole omnibus budget of, again, $444,804,91. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Article six and seven were consent calendar items. Article eight capital items. Mr. Lutz? Article six and seven were consent calendar items, uh, article eight capital items, Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone article B.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Lutz.
This article would authorize capital purchases during the upcoming fiscal year for operating funds, um, currently the town is proposing no capital purchases, um, for us today. There may be some polls that we bought order for the fall committee, um, therefore, the, uh, it would be postponed for a minute.
Any comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Article nine bonded capital, Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone article nine.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Lutz.
Similar to the previous article, uh, this would authorize capital purchases through, uh, debt financing, uh, at the, at this time, the town is proposing no capital projects. Though, as I said earlier, there may be projects brought forward into the fall county.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. There are, article ten is reserved for committee reports, I have not been informed, uh, interested in any committee reports. Move on to article, article eleven was a consent calendar item, article twelve, emergency management, Mr. Beachkowski.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer for free cash in the sum of six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to fund the town share with federal emergency management, uh, agency, uh, hazard mitigation.
It's been seconded. It moved in seconded, Mr. Beachkowski.
This, this article approves the town share of the FEMA grant, uh, that allows the town to only pay one-third of its total costs required to complete the town hazard mitigation plan.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Article thirteen and fourteen are consent calendar items. Article number fifteen is Bailey.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve article B as printed in the warrants.
It's been moved in seconded. Explanation.
Uh, a certified housing production plan is required for our town to receive safe harbor designation when it comes to 40B developments. Um, approving this money and reaching this status allows us to have more control over new developments, including a pause on 40B applications during the period that we, uh, meet the safe harbor criteria. If we do not approve this funding today and are unable to create a new plan, we will lose safe harbor status next year. We did approve this, uh, action for.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Article sixteen, another CPA expense for the senior center.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve article sixteen as printed in the warrants.
It's been moved in seconded, Miss Bailey.
The advisory committee recommends approval of this article, the amount is a maximum amount, and any amount not used will go back into the fund. The structure would be a large structure with amenities such as electrical, would be open to use by other town departments when not in use by the senior center. Represents a welcome and much-needed covered outdoor structure for town events and programs, and we have seen requests for such, uh, by us through.
Questions, comments on article sixteen, come on up.
I find the commentary not really good, I don't know if you slipped into the same area, or, uh, the documents, it says fairly, exactly. Um, that's one, two, we're talking about seniors, so are we looking at things like funding? Are we looking at things in terms of air stimulation? Are we looking at things in terms of, um, windows? Um, and, um, exactly in terms of the cost, we're talking about, um, a roof with hooks, correct? No walls. Um, so, to me, this is a really ambiguous thing, there's nothing definitive here. And you could go anywhere from a volunteer group of maybe ten thousand dollars for supplies to hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I'm a senior, so I'm not that it's, I'm not that I'm against it, I'm just, this is too ambiguous.
Anyone want to, uh, respond to this, Ms. Klein?
So, we asked a lot of, can you hear me? We asked a lot of these questions in the advisory meeting, and yes, it will include electrical, and yes, it is, it is a large, I don't know how to explain it to you, they haven't designed it yet, so there is no specs that we can give you on this, just like we can't give you a price. They have to transfer the money first, and then they can design it and build it. The hundred thousand dollars is a maximum, they do not expect to spend that, they are not thinking it will be even close to that, but they can't come back to us and ask for more money. Once we give it to them, that's all they have, so, anything that not spent will go back, they don't know the exact size, they don't know the exact structure ability, but it will be open air, so we will not need to have plant for, um, ventilation, as you asked, but it will have electrical, will be coverage for them to, in situations like this during the pandemic, or a way for them to get outside, even in inclement weather, to be able to do things where they're not constantly required to be indoors, like they have been during the last year of the pandemic. So that is all of the information that we have, so there is no more information that we can give you at this time, um, so a lot of those questions can't be answered yet, okay?
I think we might actually get a little more information here, too.
I could try, uh, Sherry Norman, council and aging director, uh, so the proposal that we put before the, uh, the CPC and then the advisory committee was based on a twenty-six by fifty-two, um, dimensions, and we got that from the vendor that supplied the pavilion to the Quon Street Recreation Department. Um, but, um, as, as was said, until we actually go through the, you know, planning board process and get the whole thing spec'd out, we don't have a whole lot more detail. Um, does, do you have any other questions I can try to answer right now besides the dimensions?
Well, I guess, the question that would be, are you committed to this group, are you going out on a bid?
Would have to go out to bid, because of the size and the, the scope of the project.
Okay. Um, commentary in terms of not needing, uh, some sort of open air, depending upon the size of the unit, and they need to, they need to, because we're talking about separate ones, do you know?
Right, I, I'm thinking ceiling fans, like, you know, the, the electrical will really have, you know, help with lighting and, and ventilation, as you point out.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, good discussion. Any other discussion on this item requires a majority vote, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Article seven, another community preservation item, a rail trail study, Miss Bailey.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve article seventeen as printed in the warrants.
Has it been seconded? It moved in seconded, explanation?
Okay, advisory committee recommends approval of this article, similar with other CPC funds, this is a maximum, um, that they would be able to use at this time, any amount not used, we go back into the fund. Um, we did ask a lot of questions about this, because rail trails obviously aren't relying on other towns also doing similar things that we would do in pass. There are some folks who think that, that this is, we're not working on this, if there are specific plans. But we did ask, and surrounding towns, including Retham, have passed funding similar to this in their recent budgets. Um, in the hope that these can be coordinated for a continuous path. The amount is only for the feasibility study at this point in time, it does not obligate us to do anything further than do this study. Um, any future scope of work for this project would come back to town meeting for a budgetary approval for anything further. Parts of the study would include identifying alternate funding, such as state grants, uh, which other towns have found success with. Having this study completed makes us eligible to go out for further grants, which could mitigate costs related to our, uh, to the town budget in the future if the rail trail were to go forward.
And I note that in the PowerPoint, uh, handout that you were given at the, um, the front check-in, there is a picture of where the rail trail might go. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Article eight, uh, article eighteen is a tax aid fund, Bailey.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, oh gosh, C six, I'm not gonna read this, um.
Chapter sixty, section three D.
Thank you, chapter sixty, section three D, to establish an aid to elderly and disabled tax aid fund.
It's been moved in seconded, explanation?
Advisory committee recommends approval of this article, Norfolk currently allows certain residents to apply for tax exemption at abatement. In fiscal year twenty-one, ninety-one residents applied for a received exemption, which means they did not, um, pay their full, uh, assessed taxes, um, because of meeting those criteria. Um, the criteria of our existing programs are pretty stringent, and they, we have found that there are residents who've had trouble paying their taxes, um, but just don't qualify for the abatement as the current rules stand. This new fund would be open to a larger group of residents, because we can have less restrictive criteria. This program would potentially also help our tax-wide tax collection, town-wide tax collections, because it's not an abatement, but a fund where people can ask for, um, money from that fund to pay their taxes. Because this fund is voluntary, basically, residents could say, yes, I want to put some money of my own into it, um, but it is voluntary to residents to put money in. Um, and the amount available to disperse to other residents would vary from year to year, depending on what was available in the fund. There would be a small committee, um, run by the town to oversee dispersment of these funds.
Thank you, any questions, comments? Mr. Rosenberg.
Um, I wonder if, um, there's any knowledge about whether other towns have had such a voluntary fund, and if so, what percentage of taxpayers have volunteered to put money into the fund in those towns?
I, I, I'm not sure I can tell you the, if there, maybe Ms. Robinson has something on the statistics, but many, many towns adopt this fund.
I don't have the number either, uh, Mr. Moderator, um, I know that, uh, of the ones that we've studied, uh, probably has the most, this program, and people have chose to, to, uh, donate to it. Other towns may have them, but not necessarily, it, it varies from, from community to community.
Thank you. Any question, other question, comment, come on up.
Hi, advisory board comments, uh, that's a small committee, I was just wondering, uh, how would we talk with that small committee, and how do we ensure that it's fair to, to all the people?
Ms. Robinson?
The committee would be five members, it would include the chairman of the board of assessors, uh, the town treasurer, and three residents who'd be appointed by the select board, so we would welcome people to apply who like, have an interest in this for the board to consider.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions or discussion on this item, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Article nineteen, electrical aggregation, Miss Bailey.
It's been a last time up, so, okay, um, Mr. Moderator, I move that town meeting authorize the select board to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load of the residents and businesses of the town of Norfolk, and for other related services, independently or in joint action with other municipalities, authorize the town administrator to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the scene.
It's been moved in seconded, explanation?
Okay, um, covering for someone else, I'll do my best, uh, there are many folks here to answer questions. Um, article nineteen provides an option for electricity that could save money for residents who opt into the program, and/or provide residents with electricity from renewable energy sources. Individuals and businesses can opt out at any time, the contracts would provide more choices to consumers and potentially reduce electricity costs.
Questions, comments? Come on up.
Do we have to opt out initially, and then after that we can, if we opt out at any time, and then the other concern is, I can see a lot of potential savings, but, um, you know, the, the, this is an active, or, or, or residents in Texas, you know, she follows.
Ms. Robinson, or Mr. Bakanski, either?
Robinson and Mr. Bakanski.
Okay.
Um, so I'll start, and I know he can fill in, um, yes, residents can opt out at any time, um, the only requirement is you can't opt in and opt out, uh, on a continual basis. Overall, uh, this is not anything like what happens in Texas, uh, this only allows the town to go out to bid on its owner with other communities as a group to find a slightly better rate for the actual power that everybody buys. Um, the transmission and distribution charge, which gets electricity to you, uh, from wherever it comes, uh, that's, that, that we can't change. I'm gonna end there and turn it over to Mr. Bakanski.
Andy, so this is just, this is just the first step of the, of the process, all it's doing is allowing the town to explore the options, it doesn't commit us to anything, it's, um, literally, it's, we're at least a year out before this even gets offered to the town. And, given where we are, and the pandemic, six months, eight months down the road, we may have some sort of informational session on what's going on here, but as, uh, Ms. Robinson said, that the electrical portion, and if you look at the slide there that has electric meter, that's the only portion that you got, you see the savings on, and your current bill, if you look at it, it's about forty-five percent, uh, the electricity, and then the rest is the transmission, distribution, and other fees, that's about sixty percent. Um, there's note here, this is, most importantly, the past four to five years that people were enrolling these programs, that the information that we got from some vendors already, that the last four to five years, there were savings, one year, uh, it was higher than the, we've ever sourced rates, so, um, it's a little bit of a crap shoot. Sometimes, but pretty, it's, it's, it's pretty stable, um, it's a personal decision, I can't tell you what I'm gonna do, uh, because I haven't had the numbers yet, but those are good, those are, maybe those are available, and I hope that's clarifying, clarifying some things, but again, this is the first step. It's not, it doesn't commit the town to doing anything other than, we're just trying to get information, so, okay?
Thank you, I believe we have a question here from Ms. Green, I'll let her use, bye-bye.
Carol Green, fifty-six, four, three, um, and, and I understand formally through the meetings, that the default is people will be automatically enrolled in this unless they respond to a postcard and opt out? So that you can automatically enroll it, and you have to be proactive to opt out?
You have to opt out, and obviously, the communication of letting people know that these cars will be going out, and what we send us from, some of those details that we can, we can, we can contract, if we decide to, you know, because people are twenty-day heads-up, ten-day heads-up, five-day heads-up, and whether it can be done electronically, too, depends, you know?
I just know how I respond to postcards.
Yeah, and, and, and.
And they go into the ROM file without even looking at them.
The good, the good thing about this is that if you, there's other third-party companies that have done this in the past, where if you don't opt out, then when you do opt out, then you get hit with a, with a termination charge, which is usually a lot more than you've saved, of course.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood the automatic enrollment.
Yeah. Yeah.
Question, sir?
Right, Mushneck, one, Petrocson Road. Will this turn into a municipal power company à la Norwood Power? Is this another form of government?
No.
But you're, you're proposing that everybody will be opted in and obligated to the town's contract? So you will now control my power, à la Norfolk Light Power? I mean, à, Norwood Light Power?
No, because we're not producing, I'll let Andy or Blythe speak, but it's not producing the power, it's just entering into a contract for regional kind of pricing, more or less.
Which is controlled, regional, you're selling it to me. You're negotiating a price that I have to pay unless I opt out, you are controlling.
What's that just mean?
I'm just not sure how you now get, have the right to take control of my power.
Let's see if we can get your questions answered. Kristin, first? Moderator, is that mic not on for some reason? Okay.
I think we discussed this at advisory, and I think where we landed was, right now, our only option is EverSource. EverSource, if you have a power company, right? EverSource controls the lines, EverSource is also who supplies the power. What this would do is allow residents to have the option of continuing to stay with EverSource, or choosing whatever the other power company the town goes with. And so from our perspective, having two choices was better than having one. That was where we landed. I can't speak for other people, but that's where we kind of felt that there was more choice.
Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Having set one of these up in another community, and also participating in one in the community I belong to, our goal here is to, and if we can achieve a lower kilowatt than EverSource, we can provide that contract to the community. And if, when people opt in, I think the worst-case scenario is they might save some money. It might be only one cent per kilowatt less, it's not gonna be a lot, as Mr. Beckenaski will tell you. If you save, you know, 20 to 50 dollars a year, that may be all it is. It might be more, it might be a little bit less, but our goal is if we can spend a little staff time to make it, give you the option to save a little money for the bill you already paid, wouldn't that be a good thing? One thing I'd also like to understand is that we're also have, when we set this up, have to make some choices about what options we want to offer people. Right now, you don't really get an option, EverSource gives you what they're required to with a certain amount of renewable energy. We can choose a couple of different options, so people can have the, forgive me for putting it this way, chance, but maybe not the least option. They can also pick, perhaps, when we set it up, one that has more of renewables in it, because that's something that's really important to them, they might even actually like to spend a little more for it. So hopefully that's helpful as well.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg? Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you. I strongly support this article. I know that similar municipal aggregation has been adopted in other communities, and has been very successful there. I like to save money, I also like to save the planet. Normally, those are intentionally like each other. The less expensive thing is also not sustainable, but the more sustainable is more expensive. In this case, there's opportunity for a sweet spot that is more sustainable, uses more renewable energy, from, energy from renewable sources, and is at the same time less expensive. And as Ms. Robinson said, the town is just going to explore this, and I very much would like the town to explore it, because they can indeed come up with an option that both has more sustainable sources and also lowers our prices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Anyone else? Come on up. Blue, in the blue first, and then Mr. Byron.
I don't think I'm sure this is the town, so it's a little bit of a, a hundred piece of wire. So we'll leave you with a wire. I would be more comfortable with this article, and I don't know if we can change it, or adjust the contract, I would be much more comfortable if this is an opt-in, rather than if you have to opt out, if that's, that's changed.
My guess is it's not, but whoever can answer that? Mr. Lutz, or whoever's rising to answer that specific question? Mr. Lutz?
Yes, this process is actually set in state law, and it is often out.
Can you tilt that mic up, Dave?
Yeah, so it is, it's an opt, you have to opt out, because the way the state law is written, it allows you to tell it to get that it's set in. And if, if it's a target, it's not, it's very difficult to, to sign up, to extend it, to have it sent, or to, to understand this, I think, let's set it up.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Just one more point on that. If you've already chosen your electricity supplier?
I don't know, that mic is having issues, I think.
If you've already chosen your electricity supplier, you don't have to be able to continue to stay with that one until your contract, and then you choose to join this one, you are able to continue to stay with that one. You've already got that contract yet, so it doesn't, in regard to respects, you've already made another choice.
Question down here?
Beth Valley, 93, Red Maple. I'm very much against this. I've used alternate energy suppliers for probably close to four years now, and I've saved at least two to three cents per kilowatt hour consistently for four years, with no cancellation fees, no minimum, no signup charge. The state has a website called energieswitchma.gov, which lists all of the competitive rates, and it also lists for each supplier, the percent of the power that comes from renewable sources and so on. So when you choose your energy supplier, you know whether you're choosing renewable sources or not. So I'm very against this. I think that as individuals, if we just go to energieswitchma.gov and shop, you'd do much better.
Thank you, Ms. Valley. Mr. Rosenberg, a final point?
So it's certainly the case that anybody who is doing, has selected an alternate supplier can continue with that alternate supplier. And it's also the case that in life generally, but in this case in particular, volume purchases get lower prices usually. And my understanding, and somebody can correct me if I misunderstand, is that with most suppliers, they have the freedom to adjust the rates every six months. And in this case, the town would have a contract that committed the supplier to typically two or three years, so you have a more stable rate. And again, have, it's likely that the town would provide options where people could decide where they want to make a trade-off between rate and percent of sustainable sources. So I think it provides more flexibility and does not interfere with anybody who's already made a choice that they're happy with. And doesn't prevent people from opting out of this and making independent choices whenever they like. But it is also the case that there's now a consortium of, I think about 25 towns in southeastern Massachusetts. If Norfolk were to go enter that consortium, we'd get the rates that we can get by being part of a much larger, larger buy.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I see no further comments. Good debate. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? All those in favor clearly have the majority in that one. It is approved. Article 20, Animal Regulation Bylaw Changes. Mr. Hurwitz?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved in seconded. Mr. Hurwitz?
This article is a comprehensive update to the town's animal regulations and bylaws, providing for modernization in addition to consistency and alignment with state law.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is approved. Article 21 is a zoning amendment regarding parking. Ms. Klein?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
Your second. It's been moved in seconded. Ms. Klein?
Okay. The Advisory Committee voted to approve this article after a lengthy discussion with the town planner and various members of the planning board in a 62 vote, one absentee. Article 21 proposes that residential density in the B-1 district be changed from 16 to 13 to 16 units per acre or in a single block. Parking structure will also be changed by right, means by zoning by right. If the applicant can demonstrate that the parking may be shared by users based on time of day or day of week, that just means you don't need a special permit when I said by right, so parking is possible. In this event, parking may be reduced by 30%. This is a change to by right zoning, so there are no charges. I'd like to take any questions?
I'd like to hear the, the planning board on this. Mr. Byron?
Hello, I'm Walter Byron.
Walter, you have to speak kind of into the mic there.
I'm Walter Byron, Chairman of the Planning Board. This article and the next two that follow, 22 and 23, are about changes to zoning bylaws applied to the B-1 district, the town center. For over 20 years, the town has been couragefully developing the town center.
You're kind of straying from the mic, so just try and...
Many, many lots remain undeveloped in the town center, and the longstanding goal of completing a traditional pedestrian-oriented New England village with retail commercial services.
Thanks for it, Sue.
No, I'm sorry. Apologies. So many lots remain undeveloped, and the longstanding goal of completing a traditional pedestrian-oriented New England village with retail, commercial services, and mixed uses, including housing, that provides a social and cultural interaction for all age groups, remains elusive. Recognizing that the zoning bylaws can set the dimensions and requirements of buildings and their uses, making the economics of construction more or less attractive to developers, more than two years ago, a B-1 zoning committee, composed of town board members and citizens, began the task of revising the B-1 zoning bylaws to inspire and encourage mixed-use development of property owners within the B-1 district, consistent with the above goal for town center. These three articles are the fruits of their labors, captured in 18 zoning bylaw revisions for the B-1 district. Two of them in Article 21, which requires a majority vote, as the moderator will confirm. Fifteen in Article 22, which require a two-third vote, and one in Article 23, also requiring a two-third vote. So the planning board supports these revisions to the B-1 zoning bylaws, and has a new adoption by you, the assembled Norfolk citizens of today's town. And I'd like to hear one or two others speak as well, and offer their thoughts on this article, and once it's called. First of all, Mr. Hadar. Mr. Hadar is a citizen of the town and has been a member of the B-1 committee.
Mr. Hadar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to add, one third of the, I'd make a run. I was, I'm a member of the B-1 committee for over two years. I was, as a citizen representative. I'm a new resident in Norfolk and got involved with this project because I believe that, as a citizen, I wanted more from the downtown. I wanted to have lunch in, you know, maybe some restaurants downtown, some shops downtown that we could shop, Goju. I have grandchildren in town, I'd like to take them downtown. My wife and I love Norfolk, but we think that there's more potential here in the downtown. So that's why I got involved in this project for two, for over the two years. The people that were involved in this project were, were really very knowledgeable about the zoning bylaws. I was not as, certainly as a, as a resident, but I learned a lot. And we had a lot of public input from people who attended our meetings. We certainly had the guidance of the planning board along the way. And I believe that, I would hope that you would support this as well, because I believe that this is a benefit to the town, and it's not going to drastically change the town, but I think it will improve the town for the better, for all of us, and from a quality of life perspective. So I would hope that you would join it, or you would support it, I'm sorry, and, and as Walter said, there's several, several bylaws here that would require your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadar. Is there anyone from the group? Come on up. Introduce yourself.
Hello, Gary Sullivan, Sixberry Lane. Is that too loud? Yep. All right, full disclosure, I was on the B-1 committee, I'm also a citizen. Whichever way you vote, I hope that the information was put out there for you, and it was easy to be seen away. Speaking, can you hear me now? Okay. To restate what the vision of the town is, we're looking to, to create a traditional pedestrian-oriented New England village. I view this as the first step of what we consider economic development. It's very difficult currently to get the lots that we have built out. And I believe that these zoning changes will promote development in such a way that improves both our quality of life and our economic development, and I believe it's in Norfolk's best interest. And I say best, because good would be more, more commercial, right? Lowers the tax burden of us as residents, okay? And also, again, gives us more opportunity to shop, do retail, et cetera. The better would be more commercial in B-1, filling out the space that we already have, maybe revamping the spaces that we already have. But best, I believe, in order to get to that goal of pedestrian-oriented New England village, is mixed-use development with a commercial focus. And it's my opinion that the zoning articles in front of you today are the best path to get there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Aaron Hunt, live at 266 Bain Street. I'm an 11-year resident of the town, and on again, off again, 4-year resident of the region. Recently served a three-year term on the planning board, and a member of the design review board, the Chair of the B-1 Zoning Committee. I'm serving on the fire station building committee, and with the bulk of the South Planning Committee. I'd like to offer some perspective this morning, from the point of view of the B-1 zoning committee, just why we're discussing these zoning changes. Our world is ever-changing. Exhibited recently with the pandemic, and over time, so town has continued to grow at a fairly steady pace over the last 20 years. In 1980, 40 years ago, the population of the greater Boston region crossed 3 million people. In 2000, 20 years ago, the population of the greater Boston region crossed 4 million people. In 2021 and into 2022, the population of the greater Boston region is projected to cross 5 million people. Boston region has the third largest, highest, third highest housing cost in the country, behind only Manhattan and San Francisco. Norfolk is within an hour commute of the cities of Boston, Robin, and Worcester. The recently approved Economic Development Bill for the state includes over $115 million in capital grants and loans, in addition to housing tax credits, for housing choice initiatives that promote affordable multifamily housing. that promote affordable multifamily housing and transit-oriented development within a half mile of an MBTA station. Norfolk has an MBTA commuter rail station. Mastod, less recently, approved a $20 billion, five-year investment plan for its MBTA system. Evidence of this investment is readily apparent with the Frankel Line track expansion curling underway in our town. In the last twenty years, the population of Norfolk has grown roughly ten percent, or up to 1,000 people. The population of Norfolk is projected to grow by as much as twenty percent in the next twenty years. Twenty percent growth equals the addition of roughly 2,000 people to the town of Norfolk. There are currently seven 40B projects on the books in Norfolk, in various stages of development. Four of those seven 40B projects are in the fields, farms, and other open spaces, outside of the town center and the B-1 district, and far more, far more than a half mile from the train station. Growth requires responsible planning and investment. Zoning changes presented here today are the work of a team appointed by and serving the town's interests, most of which are volunteers and have varying backgrounds. We discussed the articles before you this morning at great length and in great depth, sometimes agreed, sometimes argued passionately over just what responsible planning and investment is. We can be certain of a few things. The town in which we live today will be a different place in ten years, and it will be more so again in twenty years. By all accounts, it will have more people in it, it will have more infrastructure and more traffic. Hopefully, it will have a larger tax base, sewer gas, and maybe even a family-owned restaurant or two. We, the people of this town, again, must plan responsibly for this growth, so that we, the people of this town, can shape the future that we feel so passionately about. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Christina Gleason, 249 Main Street. I've lived in both three different places in town. I've lived in this town for seventy years. This is an ongoing battle we've had for years and years, trying to limit the amount of growth in Norfolk to keep it a rural town. Many of you people here came to this town because it is rural, and we'd like to keep it that way. I want to thank the committee for working very hard on this B-1 district, but I'll have a few questions, a lot of which is, this is quite a bit all in one flow, so I don't know if you can talk about...
Let's keep it to this particular article, so if you want to answer, ask a bunch of questions, I'm sure we'll take notes on this particular article. I know there's three articles here.
Are you going to divide it up into sections?
On this article, no.
Well, I would like to refer to section number two, section... And first of all, I'd like to ask you, why are you, there's so many different changes here, why are you not dividing it up? Especially since, most of the time I've been to these town meetings, the advisory board approves a hundred percent just about every single item. This section seems to be split almost fifty-fifty.
So let me respond to that, and that is, I don't know why they may have chosen, I can speculate, but whatever that choice is, we've got an article here, so I don't think it helps us here today to speculate as to why one article says one thing and one article says the other. I'd like to focus on the content of the articles, so if you have questions on the content of the article, let's focus on that.
Okay. I have a question about residential density.
Ask away.
Okay. My question is, why are you changing it from bedrooms to units? I am very confused about what you mean by unit. Could a unit be three bedrooms, four bedrooms, one bedroom? And if one unit could be three bedrooms, you multiply that by the number of sixteen units versus sixteen bedrooms, that's a big difference. If you're allowing a unit to be three bedrooms, and I can have sixteen three-bedroom units, I don't understand what you mean by unit, and if the people decide to keep the unit designation, I would like to have inserted a definition of what you mean by unit. Thank you.
So that's your first question. Do you have other questions?
Not this time.
Thank you. Mr. Byron or someone else can answer that question, and then we'll, I think we have a question from a select board member.
I think you correctly identified that a unit could be a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, or a three-bedroom residence, and the language is descriptive in that sense, it's intended to be a unit allowing a residence to be built here of one, two, or three-bedroom size.
So can we not, I don't want to have that kind of back and forth. I believe what Mr. Byron is saying is a unit is one dwelling unit, regardless of the number of bedrooms. Is that correct, Mr. Byron?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Okay. So, Mr. Calcutt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, everybody, for coming today. I know that at the top of everybody's list for this weekend, especially all the moms out there coming to stand on the football field in fifty-degree weather was probably not at the top. We do appreciate everybody's sacrifice to be here today. Thank you. I actually was on the B-1 committee, so I would hope at this point I don't have any questions, but I did want to share a little bit of perspective. I'm not going to go too far on to many of the aspects of the zoning like the others have, but I did just want to take a moment to recognize the efforts of the rest of the B-1 committee. A lot of those people do serve on other committees here in town, the planning board, the ZBA, the advisory committee, the Board of Health, so they took time out of that to add these additional meetings onto that to do research, to bring forward this alternative strategy for our town center. In addition to that, we had residents who were not affiliated to the boards and committees who served and attended these meetings, and in addition to all of that, you had residents who were out there who attended all these meetings and engaged like they were a committee member as well. All of these people had to take into account three basic things: what the community's expectation was for our town center, what was feasible from a development standpoint and from a landowner's perspective, and what fit into the master plan for our town. And after two and a half years, I can tell you that that overlap is very, very small, nearly nonexistent. So what we're presenting today represents the interests of those three groups to try to provide what we can to meet the expectations of all of those different parties. I really hope and look forward to much of the discussion, the questions, and the dialogue, and most importantly, I look forward to some alignment and interaction for how we move forward for town center. Thank you so much.
May I have to give a follow-up?
Math is not my strong point, but if you allow sixteen units, and each of those units have three bedrooms, I think that's quite a big increase in density.
Thank you. Mr. Beach Cost.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As one of the members of the advisory committee who has one of the dissenting votes, I just wanted to explain my views on where that was. The two topics in this article are very different. The first one around the units versus bedrooms. My understanding through the discussion we had at the advisory committee was that's required under general law in its discriminatory housing practice to have it be based on bedrooms. My issue is actually with the second part around parking, eliminating the requirement to reserve parking if a permit is allowed based on the time of parking usage, based on the business that is going in. If they can show that that's not required, they're approving a permanent parking waiver, which seems out of step in case that business changes and suddenly there isn't the requirement, there isn't the benefit of shared parking space based on time of use. That requirement to have it reviewed and reserved for future changes is being eliminated, and I find that something that I disagree with.
Mr. Byron, did you want to respond to something?
To the comment the gentleman just made on the parking, I sure would like to have that problem. I sure would like to have a business in town that is in a mixed-use building, a commercial operation, that has decided to move out and we've got to worry about moving in someone else who might have a few extra cars if they want to park. Boy, I sure hope we get that kind of problem in town. Thank you very much.
Ms. Klein.
As someone who also served on the B-1 committee for two years, I have a small comment tonight about that. It's not really about whether or not you would have an issue with parking, it's more about if you eliminate the parking, and the hope is, for most residents, is that we are going to get a walkable downtown with businesses in it. If you eliminate the parking up front, and then businesses won't come in, and you end up with empty storefronts with dense housing above it, that is the concern that Mr. Beach Cost is speaking of. Not really about whether or not A business A comes in and then business B wants more parking. Clearly, that's not an issue. It's more about leaving empty spaces and focusing solely on residential and not on the mixed use that everybody so desperately wants. So that's the issue with the reduction. And again, it's a reduction by right, it's not saying you can't have a reduction through a special permit, it's only saying you can get it by right, which makes a permit.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Hurwitz.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I oppose this, also on the advisory committee, but it's about the density of the building. So I don't think that in the vision for the kind of Norfolk that we want, that we want very high-density buildings for residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Do you have something to add to that? Sure.
Again, Aaron Hunt speaking. I guess we're not in the B-1 zoning committee, just a couple of responses to the recent comments here. First, the density. As part of my comments, I mentioned some recent legislation around looking at county housing within a certain distance of the train station. Through the course of actually this meeting today, we've already talked about funds that the town pursues from the state for certain housing exercises and research. One of the penalties for towns that do not have a certain amount of density within a half a mile of the train station is, is that they will not be able to apply for those grants going forward. So it is an effort by the state to encourage higher-density housing near public transportation. If we do not approve this, the town will not have that region, and we will not be penalized by not being able to apply for certain state grants. The second item is the parking comments. First of all, we are not eliminating, I shouldn't say we, the zoning proposals are not eliminating parking, it's reducing the amount of parking. Again, if the developer can exhibit, then that's the appropriate thing to do over time. I second what the moderator's comments said, I would love to have the problem of not having enough parking spaces to visit our active town. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments. Again, there is, as was just referenced, the state has recently passed a new law regarding higher density and other zoning initiatives, and to encourage those types of initiatives, they've changed the quantum of vote for certain kinds of zoning bylaws whereby only a majority vote is needed. These two, these changes in this particular proposal fall under that category, or myself and town council have discussed that, and we agree with that, so only a majority vote is required. I may see if we actually get a two-thirds vote, just to make sure, but before we do that, let's have a show of hands for everyone who agrees with this zoning change. And all those opposed? I want to do that one more time to see if I can ascertain the two-thirds. All those in favor of this zoning change? All those opposed? In the opinion of the moderator, it not only passes by a majority, but passes by two-thirds. The majority is all that's needed, but I'm declaring that it also passes by a two-thirds. So it is approved. Moving on, Article 22 is another zoning change regarding the business district. This one will require a two-thirds vote. Ms. Klein.
Moderator, I move to approve Article 22.
Thank you. Is there a second? It moved and seconded. Ms. Klein.
Okay. The advisory committee, after a lengthy and well-bated discussion with the planning board and the town administrator, as well as the town planner, voted to approve Article 22 in a five to three vote with one absence. The following proposed was changes to by-right zoning in the B-1 district in Norfolk Center, and this has no bearing on Chapter 40B development. The changes proposed in this article pertain to, but are not limited to, the use of design review guidelines in the design review process, stepped increase to the affordable housing requirement for the B-1 district, including rounding of rounding .5 and up to the next whole number, changes to the district boundaries to include a business core and an outer business core. Included in this article is the removal of the planned for-use development. Included are also changes to building height and the facade of proposed development, as well as the requirement for any new development or redevelopment to connect it to town. There are also changes to setbacks, lot coverages, lot frontage, and the build-to line. Included are proposed and prohibited uses of plots and bicycle parking requirements. Changes to zoning bylaws require a two-thirds vote at town meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Byron, the report of the planning board, please.
The planning board is supportive of all of these changes that are put together in this particular article. This is the core of the set of recommendations brought forward by the B-1 zoning committee and discussed at length. Each of the changes has been reviewed and discussed and supported by the planning board. Thank you.
Questions, comments on this specific change? Okay, seeing none. This does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Just for clarity, let's do it just one more time. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. In the opinion of the moderator, it does pass by requisite two-thirds vote. So it is approved, and now Article 23, which is a district change to the zoning bylaws.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 23, which is the map as printed in the board.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Klein.
The advisory committee voted unanimously to approve Article 23. This article updates the zoning map to the most recently amended map of the districts and the boundaries for Norfolk.
Mr. Byron, the report of the planning board. I don't know if that mic goes off on you? It's not on. There you go.
You'll see on the map that's provided in the warrant that the shape of the B-1 core, which is the darker of the two shades, has been adjusted to cover the lots that are most likely to be developed or redeveloped within the town center. A couple of lots have been added, a couple of lots have been eliminated, but the shape of, the overall shape of the B-1 district remains the same on the outer core as well. So these are changes reflecting what we anticipate would be the most likely lots to be developed or redeveloped within that B-1 core. That's the primary purpose of changing the map. I'm freezing. I'm freezing.
Thank you. Sure, come on up. Question, comment?
Comment, just following Walter's comments. It was a subject of much discussion, the boundaries and the size of this inner core, but it should be said here that one of the main reasons why there is even discussion over an inner and outer core is to limit the amount of impact to the downtown. So in other words, the zoning changes we're discussing here today are limited to the inner B-1 district, not the entire district.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments. Requires a two-thirds vote because we're changing the zoning map. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It does pass by the requisite two-thirds majority. Article 24 is street acceptance. Mr. Lutz. There are, I think he's going to be making two motions here under the same article. Let's see if we can do them both together.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept Liberty Lane and Hampton Road as public ways, and further to authorize the select board to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain any fee interest easement or appurtenances in or upon such ways, including without limitation any and all easements for utilities and drainage, and execute any documents in connection thereof.
Daredevil, I believe.
Daredevil. Further, I move that the town accept Meeting House Road as a public way, and further to authorize the select board to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain any fee interest easement or appurtenances in or upon such way, including without limitation any and all easements for utilities and drainage, and execute any documents in connection therewith.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Lutz.
The advisory committee voted at a previous meeting today to accept the first two roads, Hampton Road and Liberty Lane. There was still information being developed on Meeting House Road one, so we did not vote on that until this morning, and we voted unanimously to adopt or to accept all three of the roads, which is why the motion was divided into two. This is a standard process that the town goes through every time a new road becomes a public way. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on the street acceptances? Sure, come on up.
Good morning. Peter Bartolome, Meeting House Road. I fully support the taking of the amendment. This developer has a rather chattered, contentious passion with the town.
Let's not, I get it, let's not characterize the developer. I don't want to do that at town meeting.
I am standing here for two points. One of them is to ask the select board to support your administration in dealing with the issues that surround Meeting House, which is just one. My second question is, can someone please tell us what's involved beyond this vote today to acquire Meeting House? And do we anticipate any challenges to continue with the program? Thank you.
Town council, Ken.
Peter Mello, town council. Yeah, so there's a process that would follow the vote provided. It's an affirmative for approving vote. There's a set of procedures that govern the takings process, that the order of taking, you know, adopted by the select board, and, you know, certain instruments would need to be recorded and the likes. So that process would follow the town meeting vote.
To the extent that eminent domain is used rather than donation of the roadways, any landowner whose land is taken could challenge on either the grounds that it's not for a public purpose, which would obviously fail here, or that the value ascribed to that taking is insufficient here. There's no value ascribed, and there generally isn't for roadways. So to your second point there, there could be a legal challenge to it, but it doesn't affect the taking. The taking would go forward anyway, and that would be a separate thing for the town to deal with. So this, because it does authorize eminent domain, it does require a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of these roadway acceptances, raise your hand. All those opposed? It does pass by a two-thirds vote. Thank you. Article 25 was a consent calendar, as was 26 and 27. I believe Article 28 is not being moved. So we are on to Article 29. It is a citizen's petition relating to affordable housing. Mr. Diamond, representing the petitioners, on this, will make the main motion.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for coming to the meeting. I move to approve Article 29 as printed in the warrant, with the exception of Section H.3E2, which had been deleted and reserved for future use at last year's annual town meeting, by two-thirds vote on June 27, 2020.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Diamond, explanation?
Petition to bring this article forward to the people in Norfolk to increase the affordable housing assessment on new development within the town. There is a stepped increase through a tiered approach for all development in all districts across the town of Norfolk.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. I'd like to hear the planning board's report on this article. Mr. Byron, if you can, if you're not too cold, if, someone get this man a blanket.
It is cold. The planning board is generally supportive of this article for all districts of the town, with the exception of the B-1 district. And I would like to offer an amendment to the article to insert the words "except in the B-1 district" where the first step in the table should begin at 10 versus 6 in the first paragraph of Section H.3B applicability, between the words "bylaw" and "the," such that it now reads as follows. In any residential project containing six or more dwelling units within any district under any portion of the bylaw, except in the B-1 district, where the first step in the table shall begin at 10 versus 6, the developer shall be required to provide affordable housing units as outlined in the table below.
Is there a second to that motion to amend?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and you'll get that written copy. You can do it afterwards. Can you want to speak to your amendment?
Yes. In all the districts of the town, with the exception of the B-1 district, housing is the end in itself. But in the B-1 district, housing is a means to an end. What we're trying to do is bring commercial development into the B-1 district. And we have a perfect example of that in the building in 18 Union Street at the corner right next to the town hall. That's the type of development we're trying to encourage. And we really want to make it encouraging for developers to build that type of building in-town center without having the added burden, particularly in the smaller lots, of the affordable housing, starting at six units. The building in 18 Union Street has six apartments in it, and that's just the right size. So hopefully you will support this amendment. Thank you.
Questions, comments, discussion on the amendment only. Mr. Diamond.
Thank you. I am not in support of this change from six units to 10 units. I brought forward the six units in hopes of increasing the affordable housing in town. There have been multiple developments in town that have circumvented the 10-unit assessment that's on the books right now. And that's why I chose six to be the beginning point for assessment on new development in town. There was some discussion that there's only three properties downtown that would be eligible for less than 10 units. So I hope that you support the six-unit position. Thank you.
Mr. Bechkovsky, and when you speak, can you also let us know what the advisory board's position is on this?
So I don't think I can do that because we haven't addressed this amendment prior to this.
The amendment, okay.
So I don't support the amendment primarily because if we just increase the density downtown, it seems like any requirement to have affordable housing available in developments greater than six or 10 units should be where we have the greatest density of housing. So to exempt the B-1 core, where we just said we want greater density of housing to be near the train station, seems completely at odds with the zoning changes we just made. I don't understand how that works. Secondarily, if part of what we're trying to do is get above the safe harbor limit or affordable housing, continuing to have additional housing units come in and waiving the need for affordable housing within those developments means we will get further and further away from meeting the safe harbor affordable housing levels within our community. I don't think that accepting B-1 would be a good decision because it will, it's both at odds with the decisions we just made and would further put us away from our safe harbor 10% levels. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments on this? Do you want to speak? Do you have something new?
Yeah.
All right. So for clarification, our town planner, allow him to speak at the meeting.
Good morning. Richard McCarthy, Norfolk Town Planner. The term exemption is not quite accurate in terms of what the amendment is asking to do is start at 10 units versus six. It's not an exemption. The starting point would be 10. The balance of the zoning that passed as part of the B-1 changes mirrors the citizen petition that was submitted by Mr. Diamond. The only question and proposal amendment is just to start at 10 versus six, not to exempt the B-1.
They're saying it starts at six everywhere. They go from petition, but it starts at 10 in the B-1, so it is accepting the six from the six.
Point taken. I don't view it as an exemption.
Okay. So for clarification here, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong with respect to Mr. Byron's proposed amendment. Mr. Diamond is proposing that we have a mandatory affordable housing requirement starting at any development of six units or more. That is correct. Under the prior article that we talked about, we were starting at 10. That is correct as well. Isn't that right, Mr. Byron? So what Mr. Byron's amendment seeks to do is to sync up the two so that they're both saying the same thing rather than being in conflict. Is that only with respect to B-1? He wants to carve out B-1 so that it's consistent with the earlier zoning bylaw?
Well, it's consistent. It would be consistent with the proposed citizen bylaw, with the exception that the first step in the table would begin at 10 versus 6 in the citizen bylaw, only in the B-1 district.
But isn't that, don't we already have a mandatory set aside, or is this changing?
We have a mandatory set aside in the B-1 and the whole town at 10%. And that's it. No table. No table that goes up based on size of development.
Okay. So there is nothing, so this, I just want to clarify for the purposes of town meeting. There is no, if this passes, if your amendment fails, and Mr. Diamond's article passes, there is no conflict with another bylaw? Okay. Thank you. So we're just talking about the amendment. I wanted that clarification. Ms. Klein.
Yes. So I'd like to, Mr. Diamond didn't elaborate today, but he came before the advisory board and gave us an hour-long presentation. So if anything has changed since you came, please correct me. But what I want everyone to understand is what this is saying is that for Mr. Diamond's petition only, he is saying that he wants to start our affordable housing requirement at six instead of at 10, which is the current law for all of Norfolk, because there have been developers in the past who have attempted to skirt the 10 by building nine units. So he is saying, take the number down. He also wants to do a tiered approach, which is six to 12 is one, is 10%. 12 to 20 is 15%. 12 to 19 is 15%. And, okay, sorry. It's a tiered approach from six to 12, and then to 20, and then on up, and goes 10%, 15%, 20%. To get to that. What they're asking is to exempt the B-1 from this. So that's what you're voting on. That's what the amendment is. We will address Mr. Diamond's petition in a moment, whether you support that or you don't support that. Right now, we have to decide on whether we're going to allow the B-1 to be exempt from this six-tiered approach, should Mr. Diamond's petition pass.
I believe, actually, it's not to exempt it, but just to start the bidding at 10.
Correct. To start it from six to 10, which is what the current law is in Norfolk anyway. So what they're saying is, Mr. Diamond is saying that if you keep it at 10, there are developers in the B-1 area, as well as the whole town, who can continue to skirt that affordable housing requirement by building just under. He wants to avoid that. The B-1 would like you to keep it at 10 for the B-1 district only. That's the amendment, and then we will address what Mr. Diamond's petition says.
If you have something to clarify, but that's, I'm just trying to get the clarifications now for the amendment only.
Good morning. Good afternoon. So we started town meeting today. The inclusionary bylaw was 10% townwide. When the first article was passed for the B-1, it increased the amount of affordable housing that mirrored the petition, starting at 10. So 10 to 12 is 10%. 13 to 19 is 15%. 20 and above is 20%. And then rounded off. It exactly mirrored what was in the citizen petition, but it stayed at 10, which was the previous starting point for the inclusionary bylaw that the town had adopted for today. Mr. Diamond is townwide, starting at six and stepping up from there. The only difference between the B-1 is 10 versus starting at six. The rest of his bylaw mirrors what was submitted by the planning board.
Okay. So we have a limited item before us before we get to the article as a whole. And that is to four B-1 to start at 10 versus six units. I think that's pretty straightforward. It's a simple majority vote for the amendment. All those in favor of doing All those in favor of doing the amendment as it applies to the B-1, raise your hand. All those opposed? The amendment fails. So we are now at the main motion, which is Mr. Diamond's proposal. Final thoughts on your main motion, Mr. Diamond?
Mr. Moderator, I do have a minor amendment to my article, and...
Is it ministerial?
It's just a small clarification, a clerical error.
Can you just describe it? Maybe we'll allow it as a friendly?
I motion to add the word "units" with strike through in the first sentence of Section H3D Subsection 1A after the word "the." So the sentence, the sentence to be deleted reads, "At least 10% of the units."
H?
H3D Subsection 1A.
H3D?
H3D Subsection 1A.
So again, I just want you to read it one more time to be where it is. So I'm in H3D1A. It says, in accordance, your change would say, in accordance with affordable housing units as set forth?
So if the H3DA as printed in the warrant, it says, "At least 10% of the," and ends there.
With the strike through?
In the strike through. And I'm asking to amend that, to add the word "units" after "the."
Oh, because in the actual language...
Because it's in the bylaw.
Okay. So the actual bylaw has the word "units" in it?
That is correct, Mr. Moderator.
And can you confirm that, Mr. Byron or Mr. McCarthy, that that does exist in the actual language? I think, Mr., I just want to make sure that is actually the case, and I'll allow it as a friendly amendment if Mr. McCarthy. Okay, so the town clerk will make a note of that friendly amendment, and we're fine there. Anything further?
I do have it in writing.
What's that?
I say I do have it in writing.
We're fine, we're fine on that. We've made a note of that. Anything further on your proposed zoning amendment, Mr. Diamond?
So I need an amendment to remove H3E2, or does my motion cover that?
I thought your motion covered it. I thought your motion was clear.
Okay, I'm just asking if that's covered.
Yeah, the motion was clear. Anything further on this? Mr. Lutz.
Just to follow up on your question earlier, Mr. Moderator, you did not put an amendment out or move on the proposed citizen petition in that particular district.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Seeing no further questions or comments, it does require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It does pass by the requisite two-thirds majority. Before, I believe that takes us through the end of our warrant, I would like to thank King Philip again, and for everyone on the King Philip team for doing an amazing job hosting us again. They've gone well beyond what we ask for every single time to accommodate the town meeting. A little round of applause for King Philip. And with that, with no further articles, I'll take a motion to adjourn. It's a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hands. Thank you. Have a good Saturday.